Good morning, everyone. We're going to begin this virtual hearing with the Tax, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. And we have two bills here this morning. And the first one, before I do that, I guess I want to take roll call. In attendance today, we have myself, Sharon Green Middleton, representing the sixth district chair of this committee. I also see Danielle McCray, vice chair of the committee, representative of the second district.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Ed Riessinger, member of the committee, representative of the 10th district.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Robert Stokes, member of the committee and representative of the 12th district. Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have a member of the committee, Eric Costello of the 11th district, but he's not on at this time. And I'm checking to see if we have any, and we also have a member of the council, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, that is not a member of the committee, but--
Thank you. I'm here to support the second bill, well, both of them, really.
Thank you. And then we have a member of the office of the president. I see, I'm trying to, who, representative of the council president's office? Anyone here? I see Michael Huber's name. Michael, are you here? I guess he'll check back. I'm still looking for the council president's office. I guess they'll hop on in a few. And representative of the mayor's office. Nia, are you--
Madam Chair, this is, yeah, Matt Stegman, I'm here as well.
Oh, hi, Matt. Okay. Nia and Matt are here. And then we now have Councilman Costello of the 11th district and member of the committee, Eric. Are you present? I see--
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So the first bill we're going to hear this morning is bill number 20-0552, Tax Credits Historical Properties. For the purpose of extending the period within which applications may be accepted for historic improvement tax credit, granting the director of planning certain administrative powers and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on July 6, 2020, and the bill was sponsored by President Brandon Scott for the administration. And I want to now go directly to the agency reports, and I want to start with the law department. Ellen DePedro, are you representing this bill?
Actually, it's Hillary Rulie for this bill.
Hi.
Hi. Yes, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. We noted that it might make sense to put in something about joint regulations. The way that the first reader version of the bill is written, it just says finance and planning, planning, and I think it might make more sense for the council to determine whether it wants them each to have their own regulations or come up with them jointly. So it might just make sense so that it's clear in the bill. If you intend for the two agencies to work together on joint regulations, you probably want to say that. Or if not, if you want them to have separate regulations on separate topics, that's up to you. But that was just a clarification we suggested, and I believe Planning and CHAP have submitted an amendment that does that, and that would, that would be perfectly fine, or I have some language in my bill report, but, you know, up to you.
Okay. And I think they do have an amendment. We'll hear from them shortly.
Yep. All right, great.
Thank you. Next, I want to hear from Housing and Community Development.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you. And then I, next I want to hear from the Finance Department.
Hi, good morning. This is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director for the city. I wanted to comment, and Henry Raymond is also on the line and wanted to add a few comments. So we are supportive of this bill with, with an amendment. I want to just give a little background on, on how we came to this point. There was a committee that worked together, including representatives from Finance and Planning and some stakeholders that, that utilized this tax credit. This tax credit, we agreed collectively that we would do a one-year extension on the credit. I want to just mention that we do have some concerns longer term for the credit. There are two issues that came up in the discussions from, from Finance. One is that this credit is a 10-year, 100% tax credit on the approved value for projects under $5 million. And just to be clear, what that means is if a project is renovated and it improves the value, the city gets $0 of tax revenue on that improvement for 10 years, which we think is, is very generous. The second thing that we kind of learned as we went through the process is that this tax credit, because of the historic designation, it does tend to favor neighborhoods that are already established and might not need as large of an incentive. We had expressed those concerns. We had really good discussions with the, with the committee that was working on the tax credit, and really, we kind of ran out of time. We couldn't reach a consensus on how to adjust this credit. So we are in agreement that we should extend it for one year and come back with a plan about how we can put some reasonable controls on this credit to limit the cost to the city while we're, of course, trying to incent some of the good work that happens through this credit. Even extension the credit for one year leads to over $10 million of new costs over the course of the 10-year period, which we've reported in our bill report. And again, I think that's okay for an extension to allow us a little bit more time to figure out what, what, what we want to do for this credit going forward when we look, when we seek later this year, a longer-term extension. So in that regard, we're, we're in alignment with, with planning. I wanted to turn it over to, to the Finance Director, Henry Raymond, to comment on the rules and regulations. We do, we did offer an amendment because we think the rules and regulations are best served with the Department of Finance for consistency reasons, and I'll, I'll let Henry mention that and talk a little bit more detail about that.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
Good morning, Chairwoman Middleton, honorable members of the committee and the council. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. My comments will be related to the rules and regulations and the issue of should the responsibility be joint between the Director of Planning and the Director of Finance? As the Director of Finance, I have ultimate responsibility for the proper administration of all tax credits, and that is a fiduciary responsibility to the city. As a result, I believe that as Director of Finance, the ultimate decisions-making and authority should rest with the Director of Finance, who's responsible to the citizens of Baltimore for the proper administration of the credit, and that the ultimate responsibility for preparation and implementation of the rules and regulations should reside with the Director of Finance because of my fiduciary responsibility. If the laws passed where Planning can create their set of rules and regs and Finance has a separate set of rules and regs, this will result in nothing but confusion for the homeowners that are attempting to navigate the city process to obtain the credit. I believe that the amendment, that the Director of Planning will have, will be allowed to consult with the Director of Finance as it relates to the rules and regs, but the ultimate authority resides with the Director of Finance because of my fiduciary responsibility regarding all tax credits and city financing.
Thank you. So, committee, what I'd like to do, I'd like us to hear from Planning and then the Commission of Historic and Architectural Preservation, and then we can go, I guess, want to hear from all three of those pieces, and then I think if we, if we have any questions on any of those pieces, we could work that way.
Madam Chair, should I go, or would you let me to wait a moment?
Go ahead, you can go.
Okay. Thank you, Chairwoman Middleton. Stephanie Smith, Assistant Director, Department of Planning. Thank you to you, as well as the committee and the whole council at large for the opportunity. On, on August 20th, our Planning Commission approved this bill with amendment, and as was previously remarked by the Law Department, our amendment was for the regulations that were previously discussed to be adopted jointly, the word jointly, with the Planning Director and the Director of Finance. As we know, the Director of Finance has an awesome responsibility for our city at large, but we also realize that through the breadth and the depth of the various tax credits that our city administers, there's a lot of different technical acumen and technical perspectives that are really fundamental to properly understanding, interpreting, and ultimately administering these tax credits moving forward. As, as many folks know, we're going to hear from the CHAP Director and team, so I will not steal any of their thunder, but in my role as the Assistant Director for Equity, Engagement, and Communications, I just want to leave three things for the council to also consider in the full scope of what we're discussing today, is that equity is also, who gets to buy a home? And the fact that folks that are not, not always at the top of the earning ladder, able to actually purchase some of these homes only because of this tax credit is really important to communities' stability and to stabilizing communities that are in need of revitalization. Also, the geographic breadth and application of the, of the credit itself is also speaking to equity, that the diversity of types of communities, not just on the map, but also the demographic makeup and income makeup. And then lastly, the type of developer, that's the third piece of equity. When we're talking about new construction, that is largely the province of some of our biggest and most established builders, but folks that are able to use this CHAP credit are sometimes people very much in the beginnings of developing their careers, developing homes. So it's an on-ramp for small developers as well as buyers who may have less financial capacity than, than those that are using some of the other tax credits we use. So I just want to put it out there, Planning Commission adopted eight members that were present unanimously with amendment for jointly, and thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Delegate Smith. Okay, and then finally, we want to hear from Eric Holcomb, and then we'll discuss these amendments.
Yes, thank you so much, Councilwoman Middleton. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity. I will, my, my name again is Eric Holcomb, and I'm the Executive Director of CHAP, and with me, Stacy Montgomery, who is the manager of the Tax Credit Program for CHAP. She will be providing you with a short presentation, so she will have all of the meat to the, to create the case of why we are asking for this 12-month extension, and she'll also tell you all what we have done and what we plan to do in the next 12 months. So with that in mind, I just wanted to say that we believe that this tax credit has been extremely helpful in community development. We believe it's also been very helpful for nonprofit community developers for their efforts to create affordable housing, and we think that it has really a positive impact the last 20, 30, or 20 years in this city. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Stephanie of Stacy Montgomery, and she will present a very quick presentation for you all to show you the exciting information that we have pulled together. Thank you.
Good morning. Apologize. Let me share my screen here. Good morning. Today, I'm going to share with you information on the Historic Tax Credit Program and why we're requesting this one-year renewal today. The program was established in 1996, and since that time, it's fostered the rehabilitation of historic buildings, both residential and commercial, throughout Baltimore City. The program requires applicants to invest a minimum of 25% of the current value of the property into a rehabilitation project. The project must meet CHAP's Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. Over $1.2 billion of private investment has been leveraged through the city's historic properties through this tax credit at this time, and to date, over 500 applications have been approved and more than 3,500 properties have been, projects have been completed. The program is currently available to historic properties in Baltimore City, National Register Historic Districts, and Baltimore City landmarks and buildings individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and this amounts to nearly 90,000 properties in the city today. So here you can see a map of the currently designated historic districts in Baltimore City, both the local and national register, and there's also a lot of landmarks. That currently makes up about 20% of the city's buildings, but we know that Baltimore City is an old city with lots and lots of old, potentially historic buildings that could qualify for designation. That being said, Baltimore City still has one of the highest percentages of designated buildings in the country, so we should pat ourselves on the back, but there's still many more buildings that could be designated and neighborhoods that could be designated. So if you're not familiar with the credit, I'm just going to give you a brief insight into how it works, a very simplified version. The credit is granted for 10 years following the successful completion of a rehabilitation project. This isn't a by right credit. Each project undergoes a thorough pre- and post-rehab review by CHAP. The tax credit, it's a dollar value that gets subtracted from the property tax bill once the property has been reassessed for the improvements, and the credit is issued on the difference between the pre- and post-rehab values. CHAP staff conducts a design review for each project and administers the program in conjunction with the Department of Finance. Since the, each project requires an investment of at least 25% of the pre-rehab value, the credit is most valuable for properties that require significant work, and this is specific to vacant properties where there's a considerable difference between that pre- and post-rehab value. So the credit is designed to be most impactful in communities with the most need. And the CHAP design review ensures that the historic character is routine and that high-quality materials are used in the rehab. This isn't just promoting cheap flips. So here you can see the 1,200 block of North Gay Street. This, both sides of this block were rehabbed using the historic tax credit. This block was entirely vacant and city-owned and has now been rehabbed and sold to new homeowners, or new property owners. This, here you can see the map of the intensity of use of the program historically, where red being the most intensive use. You can also see outlined in blue some historic districts that are in process. That includes Park Heights, Penn North, Greektown, and Bayview, and obviously, as I said before, there's more room for expansion. Here's another before and after. This shows the 2,200 block of Calo Avenue and Reservoir Hill. Druid Heights CDC has been using this credit in the neighborhood and has used this credit to eliminate vacancies along Calo Avenue. For some background on the legislation, the last time this credit was renewed was in 2016, and that provided a sunset date of February 28, 2021, so we couldn't accept applications after that date. Anticipating this, in July of 2019, CHAP retained the services of Place Economics, which is a historic preservator, or a consulting firm that specializes in the economics of historic preservation, to conduct a study of the program. In October of 2019, the Historic Tax Credit Advisory Group was formed, and that was formed of both folks from the city and stakeholders who use the credit often, and they were put together to guide both the renewal process and the consultant study. In February of 2020, the group was considering some very robust changes to the program. However, in March and April of 2020, the Planning Department, Department of Finance, and CHAP agreed to just pursue this one-year renewal of the existing legislation because of the uncertainties faced, the city faces with COVID-19 and the impact it might have on the city's budget and economy. Here's another before and after. This is the work of the Historic East Baltimore Community Action Coalition on the 2,400 block of East Eager Street, and here we see a mix of newly rehabbed houses with legacy homeowners. So back when the credit was introduced, CHAP always maintained that the credit would provide the city with aesthetic, cultural, and economic value. The 2020 report from Place Economics, a consultant that we hired, provided hard data to back our assumptions, and so I'm going to share with you just a few of the points that were brought forth in the study that we think are really important to why this credit has been so useful in the city. First of all, more than 3,500 properties have been renovated using this credit, and that represents a private sector investment of $1.2 billion. Secondly, that the credit produces value. The properties whose CHAP's credits have now expired increased in value from $17 million in 2000 to $211 million in 2019. And income from property taxes on those properties rose from $1.3 million to $5.9 Because of the investment and increasing property values, the taxes foregone over 10 years are recouped in just over seven years. And this is a simplification of a, an if-then test to see, is the credit financially worth it? And in the end, the consultant came to the conclusion that yes, Baltimore is foregoing $10 million each year through the tax credit. However, very conservatively, even if 52% of the projects would not have happened without the credit, the city is better off financially than if there were no credit because the city gets a return for each credit. It gets a return on its investment above and beyond what it issues for each credit that's issued. So projects like the American Brewery that's pictured here on North Gay Street, this is a game changer for communities. The restoration of this building helped revitalize the surrounding communities, and the Historic Tax Credit was one of the programs this project leveraged, but projects like this need a lot of incentive to make this happen. You can't, you can't do this with less. You have to fill gaps to do this building justice. It had to be done, and given a lot of funding to make it great, and it's, you know, nationally seen as a fantastic example of rehabilitation. A sixth point that this study brought out was this idea of a halo effect, that projects, tax credit projects have a halo effect, that properties located within 500 feet of the CHAP credit see increases in aggregate property values greater than properties between 500 and 1,000 feet of CHAP credit projects, significantly greater than the rest of the city. And this is really important for increasing the value of our neighborhoods. It also inter, increases intergenerational wealth and helps legacy homeowners in these neighborhoods. The legacy owners reap the benefit and the value of the tax credit that increases their property values, but it prevents them from experiencing significant tax increases because we have the city's homestead tax credit. They are able to take advantage of that, they can enjoy the rising value without the rising taxes. Here's another before and after that shows the 300 block of East Landville Street in Greenmount West, where a number of small developers have been rehabbing vacant buildings throughout this neighborhood. Another point that the study came out with is just the rate of higher-value growth in the halo vicinity that we spoke about previously. Those projects have created a preservation premium of $2.5 billion in property values. And if just as little as 20% of that premium is attributable to the investment through the CHAP credit projects, the $10 million that's foregone in revenues from the credit is recovered from the additional taxes generated from nearby properties. And the last point I'll share with you from this study that we thought was very, very important is the jobs that this program creates. It creates a lot of jobs. Just over the last five years, an average of nearly 600 direct and indirect jobs and $36 million in labor income have been generated each year through the CHAP credit projects. So that creates jobs for developers and contractors, yes, but also for real estate agents, for construction workers, for tradespeople and artisans. These are good-paying jobs for people from all walks of life. So Stephanie alluded to this earlier, and, you know, we know that equity is really at the center of so much of our discussion right now in the city, and we believe this credit is an equitable tool for community development. It provides, the value of the credit is greater in more distressed neighborhoods. The higher the difference between that pre- and post-rehab value, the more valuable the credit. It's allowed the rehabilitation of vacant and abandoned buildings that otherwise might not have occurred, and has also made homeownership more affordable in these neighborhoods. The credit is an essential tool for nonprofit community development corporations. It's been a critical tool for groups like Habitat for the Community of the Chesapeake, Druid Heights CDC, and their programs, and that's just to name a few. The credit has supported first-time homebuyers, and really, generally, all homebuyers who use the credit because it reduces that monthly debt service by several hundred dollars. And finally, as we alluded to before, it also builds intergenerational wealth because families that are legacy homeowners benefit through the halo effect. And we've also discussed this Historic Tax Credit Advisory Group that was put together, and although we believe the credit is an equitable community development tool, we know that making it more accessible to more communities would make it more equitable. And with that goal in mind, the Historic Tax Credit Advisory Group developed some recommendations. I won't name all of them, but a few of them. First and foremost is changing the program goal to emphasize equity and inclusion, and to meet that new goal, there are a couple of new ideas that we want to explore, hopefully, over the next year or so. First and foremost, developing stronger outreach, training, and marketing to increase access and understanding of the program. Second, to study the eligibility requirements and tax credit duration to determine if changes can create a more equitable community development tool. And lastly, to promote existing and advocate for additional tools to prevent displacement and gentrification in neighborhoods where the credit is used. We've spoken about the homestead tax credit and how that protects legacy homeowners, but we want to make sure that that stays in place and there are maybe other tools to protect folks in those neighborhoods. So that leaves us with the next steps. That's why we want to request this renewal for a year today. Over the next year, CHAP and the Historic Tax Credit Advisory Group would like to work to craft a bill that implements the recommendations of the advisory group to enhance the equity and effectiveness of the program. We've identified two places where we could explore over the next year to increase the eligibility of the credit, to encompass more neighborhoods of Baltimore, and to look at the value of the credit to see if it can be emphasized in more distressed neighborhoods. So throughout the next year, CHAP looks forward to working with the Marion City Council to improve this essential development tool. And I'm going to leave you here on the 2,000 block of McCullough Street. This is another block that was vacant and was rehabbed using the Historic Tax Credit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. So what I want to do next, I have a question for the mayor's office, and I guess that would be Matt Stegman. We have a couple amendments here that the committee has to make decision on, and I'd like to find out what direction the mayor's office is interested in going with these two amendments between the Planning Commission and Finance.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So we have not had an in-depth conversation internally about these two amendments. Yeah, I, I think we would, you know, follow the, the will of the council. You know, that being said, you know, I, I think that Director Raymond made a very good point about his responsibility as the, you know, as a fiduciary for the, for the city. And either way, if you have both the Finance Department and the Planning Department involved in the process, I think it, it'll make for a stronger process.
Okay, thank you. At this point, any questions from the committee?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Riessinger.
Yes. Madam Chair and committee members, I understand Attorney Raymond's statement regards to his fiduciary responsibility, but I'm also concerned, and being this question asked, is that regards to Planning Department, since I sit on the Planning Commission, I see how dedicated some of the staff is when it comes to the CIPs, the capital improvement money, and how they work within the city of Baltimore. So I really in-depth understand what the job description is. My concern is that I think planning should, should be at the table when these decisions are made because they're the ones that's outside into the community. when these decisions are made because they're the ones that's outside into the community, whether it's Pemlico or Mall Park or East Baltimore. They're out there in the neighborhood and the communities discussing the plans in those areas. And especially with, uh, CHAP and whose districts. I just want to know where, uh, Bill Henry, I mean, uh, Henry Raymond is in regards to the Planning Department sitting at the table making these decisions. Because if, if, if the Director of Finance makes a decision, then what if planning has issues that will affect the community, if I'm saying it correctly?
Director Raymond, can you, uh, do you want to answer that?
Uh, yes, ma'am. In response to, uh, Councilman Reisinger, uh, my position would be that the Planning Department and CHAP, uh, we would work very cooperatively with the agency. They would have a seat at the table. We would negotiate the rules and regs. But again, ultimately, there has to be one person ultimately responsible. And as Director of Finance, I have to administratively control all tax credits to ensure that all tax credits are implemented fairly, consistently and objectively. At the same time, I can assure the council, planning and CHAP that their voice will be heard as it relates to all rules and regs issues. I'm advocating that the amendment would be that the Director of will be able to consult with Finance. I'm, I am objecting to the word jointly because if it's equal, things won't get resolved. I guess an analogy would be you have a, a ship. You can't have two captains of the same ship because the ship will run aground. So again, I'm asking that the Director of Finance have ultimate authority over the making of rules and regs with the clear understanding that the Department of Planning and CHAP staff will clearly have input to the process. And I hope that, that addresses, uh, Councilman Reisinger's concerns.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I just want to, I just want to add that, uh, I trust Henry Raymond when he says that I will do this with the, uh, planning and CHAP. I'm not, my concern is that three years, five years, whatever, when Henry Raymond is not there, you know, I mean, I hope you're there to retire. But if there's a new director, then he could change his, his tone or his decision that he doesn't want planning to be at the table. He wants, that individual may want sole responsibility. I'm not an attorney. I just want to know is somehow can we put that, and this is the Law Department, can we put that as a, within the amendment that planning and CHAP is at the table?
Absolutely.
With, with them, with the Director of Finance having a physical requirement.
You absolutely can, you know, um, I mean, we would, we would approve the bill as written, but I think everyone realizes it's vague. And you want to clarify what you want. And if what the council wants is some language that says, you know, finance must consult with CHAP and planning and then finance will adopt, you can do it that way. I mean, it's certainly legal to have joint regulations, but it's also, you know, obviously, you know, important to resolve differences. And if there needs to be, as the, as the director said, you know, so eloquently, one, one person in control of the ship, you can absolutely do it that way. You can, you can make that language, um, encompass the need for, of a consultation with planning and CHAP as well.
Thank, thank you, Hillary. Uh, Mr. Raymond, are you good with that?
Uh, yes, sir, I am. Okay.
Okay.
So, Madam, Madam Chair, uh,
I, I do, I do, there, uh, if there are any more questions, because I do hear, I do see, um, quest, uh, Councilman Costello and then Councilman Stokes had.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'd like to defer back to Councilman Reisinger. I think he was pushing up what he was saying, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, Councilman Reisinger deferred back to you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Stokes, uh, did you have?
No, I, I, I did have a question, Madam Chair. I just, I wasn't sure if Councilman Reisinger was finishing his thought.
Councilman Reisinger, will you finish at the moment?
Yes, to a ready make, I want to make an amendment, make, you know, introduce.
Okay.
I'm good.
Um, Councilman Costello, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so as, as I'm reading this, this says that the Finance Director, I'm on page one, line 18, uh, and 19, the Finance Director and the Director of Planning may adopt rules and regulations to carry out this section. I just want, just so I understand, Director Raymond, you're, you're suggesting that it should be the, the Finance Department should adopt rules and regulations in consultation with the Director of Planning. Is that correct?
That's correct. And again, to be clear, the Director of Finance will have the ultimate authority over the creation and implementation of the rules and regs.
I, I got that. Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I, I fully understood. I mean, certainly appreciate everything you, you do, Director, and, and how seriously you take your role. And the city's better positioned because of that. Um,
Thank you.
The, we have existing rules and regs for the CHAP credit, correct?
Yes, we do.
So I am on, I'm in my web browser. I found a snippet of information on DHCD's website. References to the credit on Baltimore Development Corporation's website. A slew of information on CHAP's website, including but not limited to a tax credit FAQ, a one-page flyer, six tips for success, CHAP's, CHAP tax credit procedures, not to be confused with rules and regulations adopted by the Department of Finance, and nothing on the Department of Finance's website. And I'm wondering why, why we don't have these rules and regulations posted online. I know that the council, um, is going to be taking up legislation the Tuesday after next in the Judiciary Committee to deal with an administrative, basically a directory of rules and regs online. Uh, but that's not, uh, if we pass that, that's not going to go into effect until, I don't know, let's call it October. And then the city's required specifically the Department of Law and Department of Legislative Reference to have that stuff posted within 12 months. So we'd be looking at October of 2020. Where I'm getting at with this question is, I'm sorry, this is unlike me to go on this rambling here. Where I'm going with this question is as follows. We consistently have, uh, individuals, whether they are, uh, you know, the, the homeowner who intends to live there or whether they are, um, builders or, or folks who are doing rehabs, who intend to sell the property to someone and for the credit to go with the property, who are confused by the rules and don't understand what needs to, what needs to be done in order to qualify. And Director, as you know, we've had a lot of back and forth and been on the opposite side of whether or not a property is eligible for it or not, at least a dozen times in my six years on the council. So how do we, Director, what's your idea? And I'd like to hear from Eric from CHAP on how we fix this so that there remains no confusion over how to qualify for the credit and what needs to be done.
Let me respond, Councilman Costello. First, uh, the rules and regs are on the Department of Finance's website. Um, I can provide more information regarding that. In reference to your latter question, increased coordination between planning, CHAP and the Finance Department unit responsible for, uh, the programmatic and the administrative implementation of the credits will help. And this legislation allowing planning and CHAP a seat at the table will address that. And I think that there will be better coordination moving forward. Again, my position is the implementation of the credit has to be done fairly, consistently, objectively, within the letter of the law. We can't cut corners and play games with the credits because it's not fair to all citizens or homeowners that might be eligible for the credit.
So, Mr. Holcomb, did you want to hear from Mr. Holcomb?
Madam Chair, in one second, I just want to respond to Director Raymond. So Director, I did find it on the website just now. Thank you. On the website, it's referred to as the Historic Restoration Rehabilitation Property Tax Credit, which is synonymous with the CHAP credit. I think part of the confusion here maybe is that we refer to this thing as two different things, even though it's the same thing. So I would ask that, um, if you could have your folks update your website this week to reflect also known as CHAP credit in parentheses. And Eric, uh, before you respond, if, if you could work with the folks in planning, as I imagine they provide the support for the CHAP website or whether it's your folks or BSIT, if you could have them include the rules and regs, because the rules and regs are not on your page. And in addition, if you could also note in the heading title where it says Baltimore City Tax Credit for Historic Rehabilitations and Restorations in parentheses, also known as the CHAP credit. And then if you could respond, so first, that ask, and second, if you could respond to my initial question to Director Raymond about how we cut down on this confusion about whether or not you qualify or not and what are all the steps that you need to do in order to qualify.
Mr. Holcomb?
Madam Chair, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you so much. So first of all, um, before I, I step into answering the question, I just wanted to make sure we sort of identify the issue of why we asked for this amendment in the first place. Um, and, and that is that, you know, the Department of Planning has the expertise in community revitalization and community development. This credit has been one of the most significant tools in community development. And sometimes the rules and regulations, uh, it's going back to 20 years or so. Sometimes those rules and regs have a negative impact on our ability to create the best community revitalization and development. So I really appreciate Director Raymond, uh, stating that we will have a seat at the table. And I ultimately respect, uh, where he comes from, with his ultimate authority, the fiduciary authority. I think the Department of Planning has the, their authority is to make sure that we, uh, revitalize our communities, help our neighborhoods. That's what we want to do. That's what this credit does. So I just wanted to say that's where we want to make sure our expertise are part of the rules and regulations. Now going to what Councilman Costello, I would be more than happy to make sure that the rules and regulations are on our, uh, website. Uh, some of the recommendations that come from the Tax Credit Advisory Group, which we started last year and they will continue to help us throughout the year. One of the recommendations was to make sure that we, uh, clarify any of the areas that confuse people that and folks who know exactly what they need to do in order to be eligible to receive the credit. Not only receive the credit, but to receive pre-certification and final certification because this is a two, at least a two-step process. And it's, and the tax credit review from, uh, the CHAP department is, I think, essential in a, ensuring high-quality uh, uh, restoration, high-quality materials into the building. High, it demands higher quality craftsmanship. And it also protects the, the, uh, design of it. Sometimes we could design roofs that leak, uh, less than roofs that leak more. So I think in the, in all of those three ways, CHAP really enhances the revitalization of buildings, which also is revitalization of neighborhoods. So yeah, I am looking forward to work with, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, to Director Raymond. Uh, and I also look forward to, uh, you know, putting the, uh, rules and regs on our website and actually clarifying them and working with our, uh, Tax Credit Advisory Group, the folks who use them, the folks that got, have gotten picked up. I'd also just like to say is, uh, the CHAP staff is always available for anybody. Uh, we get hundreds of emails for, uh, about this program and we help people all along the process, before they begin the process, during the process, when they're doing amendments to their filter work, uh, and also final certification. So, uh, we'll make sure that the staff is also available to help anybody. I rambled for a little bit. Uh, Councilman Costello, did I answer your question?
Uh, yes, and Madam Chair, if I could just close with, with one point.
Yes.
Back over to you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, then, uh, then Councilman Stokes right after.
Uh, Eric, yeah, that, that's helpful. Um, one thing that I'd like to do after this passes, I would like to work directly with, uh, Director Raymond, yourself, Eric, and the Department of Planning, as well as having HCD and BDC at the table. And I'd like to put together, uh, a webinar, uh, specifically with the Greater Baltimore Board of Realtors as well as, uh, the Maryland Building Industry Association, so they can push that out to all of their respective membership. Uh, so we can kind of do a, uh, you know, a one-hour webinar, a refresh reminder, whatever you want to call it on the tax credit, what this bill specifically did, where you can find the rules and regs, the fact that we're going to normalize, uh, the information from a data perspective on each of the respective city websites. So it's all pointing to the same place and the same information is on BDC's website and, and Plannings and CHAPs and housings and, and Finance. Uh, Eric, uh, can I have your commitment that you'll participate in that?
Not only do you have my commitment, I, I would greatly welcome that, uh, Councilman. Thank you so much for offering your help.
And, uh, Director Raymond, I assume you'll be on board as well?
Correct.
Thank you very much. And once we get this passed, I will circle up with each of your respective offices, uh, to set that up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And we'd like a update, the committee would like an update on that as that moves forward as well, if that's possible.
Abs- absolutely, Madam Chair. And I hope that I didn't overstep my bounds by offering.
Of course not. Of course not. It's, it's, it's about equity. We're all trying to put the pieces together.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Stokes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say that, uh, tax credits has been very successful in my district. But my question is, um, Delegate Stephanie Smith, and I've been talking about it, that word equity. Nice buzzword. I just heard Ms. Montgomery say they're going to go on to those most distressed neighborhoods. But I thought the actual tax credit and the word equity means you suppose there already be in those neighborhoods. So my question to, um, um, I guess Ms. Montgomery or Mr. Holcomb is, do you have the data to show that those tax credits already have been used in those most distressed neighborhoods? Because I have a concern. If not, why are we now having that conversation or the statement saying we're going to go into the most distressed neighborhoods? I look at my district, it works in some neighborhoods it has. But the, the word equity means distressed neighborhoods, and I have not seen that, not just in my district, but all over the city. So if they have the data to show that they already in that area, I think this committee should have that data. And again, I want to know their definition, not outside equity, but inside that agency. What is your definition of equity to this committee? Because there's, I'm, I keep hearing the word, but I don't want to know what equity is outside of your agency. I want to know what your definition of equity inside your agency and showing the data that you actually been applying it to, um, those distressed neighborhoods. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good question, uh, Councilman Stokes. Um, Delegate Smith? Or, um, yes, Mr. Holcomb, you want to answer first?
Uh, sure, sure. Uh, yes, yes, we do have the data, Councilman. We, we have, Place Economics has created a, uh, incredible. We, we have, Place Economics has created a incredible, incredibly detailed report on the use of this credit. This credit has been used in many neighborhoods. In fact, it's been used in some of the neighborhoods that were more distressed back in the late 90s, early 2000s, that are not distressed anymore. And now it's moving over. But one of the things when we say we want to increase the eligibility to our more distressed communities, what we really mean is that we, the eligibility for this credit is based on designation as a historic district. So we want to increase the designation of the, of historic districts in here. Old West Baltimore, Old East Baltimore are national registered historic districts, and the impact of this credit in those neighborhoods has been extraordinary. So with that in mind, I would, I don't want to define equity, I would rather have the delegate.
I'm happy to jump in. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Councilman Stokes, for the question. So first of all, we want to acknowledge that the city council adopted an equity assessment program that sets forth equity expectations for all agencies, including planning. And that is one set of oversight as administered by the Office of Civil Rights and Equity. But prior to the equity assessment program being adopted by the city council, our staff started their own equity committee, came up with their own equity action plan, and also developed a staff-derived definition of equity that we continue to revisit, and honestly, we actually discussed last week, maybe expanding upon this current definition. As it currently reads, and I'll be happy to put this in the chat as well, "An equitable Baltimore addresses the needs and aspirations of its diverse population and meaningfully engages residents through inclusive and collaborative processes to expand access to power and resources." And for our staff, the last bit of that, expanding access to power and resources was actually critical. Much of what institutions, including government, constitute as outreach is usually telling residents what they already plan to do. It's usually not inviting people into thought, a thought leadership process around outcomes and planning pathways to a solution. So one of the things that we thought would help to address, for example, an issue like application of CHAP credits. We started the Planning Academy in 2018 with the very sense that many people do not know how to productively engage in the land use and development system. Usually, if they do so, it's often in a reactive posture, not in a proactive, you know, posture. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that for folks that were participating in Planning Academy, we really put an emphasis on applicants that were living in the weakest housing markets as derived from our housing market typology. So what's really important about this, and this is a long way to get to your answer, is we realize that we do not have the marketing capability to always inform people of the very amazing opportunities the CHAP credit and other programs in the city have to offer. Quite frankly, there are agencies that have more people doing communications for them than we have working on the CHAP credit itself, just to give a little bit of a reality check here. So we realize that the work we're doing could be amplified if we found creative and other ways to get the word out, so that people realize that this opportunity exists. There are existing historical districts where there is sometimes just a lack of community cohesion around community associations and other types of groups that you would tap into to feed this information. So we're going to hit the box, but we were committed to improving that outreach pre-COVID. And even though COVID has obviously introduced some challenges to what that outreach looks like, we're still just as committed to getting this information in front of as many communities as possible. But I do want to lift up that the geographic diversity of this credit is still significant, but it can be improved. I am someone that always feels like you never get there. You should always be improving, you should always be evaluating, you should always be strengthening. So our recognition of the need to strengthen is actually, I think, itself a strength, because many times people just accept the status quo as their ceiling instead of their floor. So I appreciate your question, Councilman. That is our working definition, it will be evolving. And when we use the equity assessment program in conjunction with our own self-propelled desires to have more equitable outcomes for the city, we are looking forward to the work and for the opportunity to extend this work through the extension of this credit.
Madam Chair, I just have a follow-up. First of all, I want to thank Delegate Smith, because I know she's been in the forefront of this equity piece. I hear it a lot, and I'm, it's all the agencies. I want to know their definition of equity inside, not outside. So I appreciate your response, but I want to work closely with you so we can get that information out to the community that, about the tax credit itself. So I'll be working closely with you so we can promote that more in those distressed neighborhoods, so our residents can take advantage of tax credits. Right now, a lot of probably don't know nothing about it or what the process is, so I look forward. Thank you.
I welcome it, you got my number. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes, Madam Chair, can, can we request that Mr. Holcomb send you, Madam Chair, his current data?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holcomb, could you send the committee your current data?
Absolutely, I will send probably three different, I will send the full report, which is about, well, or 60, 70 pages. I will send a one-page brief, and I'll also send sort of the recommendations from the Tax Credit Advisory Group to you.
Okay. Any more committee questions? Okay, so before we move to public testimony, is the committee prepared to take a vote on these amendments? Or I would like to propose that, or would the committee be prepared to ask the two agencies, which is finance and, well, really, finance, planning, and CHAPS, if you could get a joint amendment together and we, and have it introduced on the floor at the next council meeting? So I want to throw that out there to the committee as well. And we could have Councilman Reisinger introduce the committee, introduce, or, you know, we'll decide who that is.
That, Madam Chair, that'd work for me.
So you like the idea of a floor amendment on the, be introduced at the next council meeting, which is September 21st? So that gives time for that to happen?
Yes, I agree, I think with all sides communicating, it will be cleaner when it comes to the floor.
Okay. Okay, so I think that that's going to be the best proposal for these amendments.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Councilman Costello, did you?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, just had a question. Can we, is it possible to put a deadline on when that amendment would be shared with the committee in advance of that September 21st, so we're not just seeing it for the first time on Monday evening?
Yes. How about September 14th? So the committee would like from the agencies, by September 14th, this floor amendment. I'd like to have someone from the office of the mayor, Matt, can we make that happen? Matt, Matt Steadman or Nia, are you there?
Yes, yes, ma'am, yeah, we absolutely can make that happen.
Okay, so it looks like the committee will have, will be able to see this floor amendment on September 14th for the September 21st council meeting. Okay, now we're going to hear testimony from attendees, and we're going to do this by hand raised only. We're going to have up on the screen the, the directions for public testimony. And just to quickly go over it, you know, the committee staff will coordinate the public testimony and be patient as we go through this. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. You're going to hear a couple beats. You're also, I want to stress that you're going to be called with a hand raise. So if you don't have your hand raised, that's letting you know that you, you don't want to speak, but I do want to let you know that you can continue to bring in written public testimony. You can email to the committee, and that will be included as we move forward. So as I go down the attendee list, we have Mr. Frank Boston, you have your hand raised. You have to unmute yourselves, Mr. Boston, are you there?
I'm here.
Yes, we're listening, we're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. Yep, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the council, this is Frank Boston. Before I get my testimony, I just want to be clear.
And this is for the tax credit, your testimony, correct?
Is this the tax bill?
No, that's the next bill. This is the tax credit for CHAPS.
Okay, I put my hand down.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it sounded unfamiliar. I have no comment. I'll wait.
Okay. Akai Hunter, your hand is raised.
Yes, this is Micah Hunter.
Micah, I'm sorry.
Yes, no problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm from, from B&amp;B Urban LLC firm here in New York City. You know, we definitely fell in love with, you know, the downtown Baltimore area, its historical character, and the people that are there. And, you know, we decided to purchase, you know, two properties there, 301, 305 North Howard Street. And, you know, we wanted to really invest in the area and really, you know, see there's potential. And, you know, one of the vehicles was through this CHAP program to, you know, make this project, you know, a little bit more economically possible to, you know, move forward. You know, there's, you know, obviously a lot of certain areas, I guess block by block, there's some light in that area, and we're hoping that, you know, our development would, you know, create, you know, investment, further investment into, you know, downtown area, as well as, you know, you know, create, you know, a lot of work activity and, you know, really make it a destination place. But right now, you know, I understand there's some challenges to that, but we are hoping that the CHAP program may continue, you know, so that, you know, again, that, you know, there can be a better place in that area and, and, you know, more jobs and other things, multiplier effects that would occur, you know, once we can, you know, get further investment there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And as I, as I continue to go down the list, Johns Hopkins?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Johns Hopkins with Baltimore Heritage.
Hi.
I'm sorry, can, hi, thank you. I'm with Baltimore Heritage, a nonprofit organization here in the city, and was a member of the CHAP Tax Credit Task Force. I won't repeat the testimony from Assistant Director Smith, or Eric Holcomb, or Stacey Montgomery, compelling data going into how much of an impact the tax credit has citywide. I did want to offer one comment on the issue of the proposed amendments. As a member of the task force, I was impressed at how open-minded everybody came, no matter what their background was, to that task force assignment of trying to make the tax credit as far-reaching as it can and as strong as it can. And my comment about the proposed amendments is, that's the issue of which agency it takes the lead in offering and issuing regulations, or and/or how they share that authority is not something that the task force discussed directly. And I think the task force folks might offer some insight as users of the program and as, as people on the streets who are involved with it. So my suggestion would be, the tax credit has operated under its current regulations pretty successfully for 15 years or more. So my thought would be, at least one option would be to reauthorize it for one more year as it is, give the task force and the agencies time to think through the issue of how the regulations should be assigned, and then we'll be back here next year with a much more informed position, including one that includes members of the public and people who use the credit. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions. Angelica Bailey?
Oh, no.
Am I saying your first name right?
Yes.
Angelica Bailey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, can you hear me okay, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Good morning, everyone, Angelica Bailey here for the Maryland Building Industry Association. I just want to speak briefly about MBIA support for 20-0552. A lot of great points have already been made, so I'll be quick. We do feel strongly that extending this program for another year is in the city's best interest. Between Ms. Montgomery's excellent presentation and the place economics findings, we think it's pretty clear that the credit encourages folks to invest in our city and do substantial rehabs that benefit the neighborhoods themselves, as well as the city's tax base. You know, part of what makes Baltimore special is the architectural fabric of the city, and this tax credit helps to incentivize thoughtful development.
Hello?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me all right?
Now, yeah, we missed some of that. Your last part.
Yes, thank you, sorry about. Well, the last part was simply that we really think this credit can help to incentivize thoughtful development while maintaining that special architectural fabric of the city. So we do ask that you support the bill, and we also want to thank Councilman Costello for his webinar idea. We'd be very happy to help with that, and we look forward to being a part of that. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Ellie Cowan?
Yep. Hi, yes, hi, this is Ellie Cowan. I am the Director of Advocacy at Preservation Maryland, which is the statewide historic preservation organization with our office located in Baltimore City. I'm also a lifelong Baltimore City resident, so I'm very happy to be able to testify today in support of this legislation and the historic tax credit bill. I won't belabor the points made by Ms. Montgomery and Delegate Smith, and the data that they've shared from that place economics report about the immense positive impact that the credit has had all across the city. I would just urge the committee to support this bill, and I look forward to hearing what the, the larger improvements that the Historic Tax Credit Committee comes out with later. So I think that extending the credit through 2022 will allow for the impact of COVID-19 to be properly considered, while allowing the tax credit to continue in its work of encouraging investment in Baltimore's neighborhoods and in its revitalization. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. The next person, Khalil? Hello?
Hi, good morning, Madam. Yep, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Thank you, good morning, Madam Chair, council members and committee. My name is Khalil Okda. As a private developer that frequently uses the CHAP Historic Tax Credit, specifically in transitioning neighborhoods, I support everybody here as, as well in that, an extension for one year. Given that we can take a deep-dive analysis of the program, would be beneficial to Baltimore City as we continue to remove blighted and vacant housing and provide opportunities for home ownership. One, one comment that I want to- One comment that I want to make additionally, I have had a chance to take a look at some of the data around the program's use, and I found that since its inception in 1996, it looks like more than a third of the applications have been centered around three neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods are Canton, Patterson Park, and Fells Point. That said, during this year, this additional year, we should take a very hard look at potential opportunities to improve the program's reach, to better impact the whole Baltimore City, and not have it fixated in specific areas. I think that would greatly benefit the city of Baltimore. And there are already opportunities and places where an additional layer of incentive could certainly help, coupling it with the Opportunity Zone Program, where we have 42 opportunity zones in the city, or potentially the NIF districts, the Neighborhood Impact Innovation Fund districts, could provide some additional incentive that allows for the program to continue transforming Baltimore in what we all would like to see well into the future.
Thank you. Lamont Jones? Yes.
Yes. I've been a developer in the city for like 15 years, and building houses in the city has been pretty much interesting. I started building houses probably with CHAPS probably five years ago. When I started working in the Canton and the Canton.
Say your name, say your name.
My name's Lamont Jones.
Thank you.
All right, when I started doing the houses in this area, like probably about five years ago, houses without CHAPS, I'm being honest, they really don't move. And when you put the CHAPS on these, on the houses, it's a certain, that actually go out and walk on that property. And you can literally sell your property for, being a developer, you can sell your property for at least $30,000 to $40,000 more. The crazy part right now is, as we speak, I'm sitting here working on finishing my, one of my CHAP tax credits right now for 2208 East Fairmont Street. I know if I was to put this property on the market right now, I would lose probably about $35,000 because I didn't have the CHAP tax credit. It puts incentive into the developer's pocket and also puts incentive into the buyer's pocket, the buyer's pocket, because with, since I didn't finish my process all the way, my tax, up to $4,000. So on this property, now my taxes are like $7,000, or my taxes, when my CHAPS kick in, it actually reduces the amount, which will allow the property to be affordable for my, for the end buyer. It's a wonderful program. I do agree with the last person that said, we need to extend it into different, it needs to be, a program like this needs to be looked at into more, in different areas such as areas on the west side, and because there's, there are old houses also, about all the time, I've done a part of about 700 houses in the city, and those houses are over 107 years old, 95 years old, 95 years old. And I think to help expand the city's reach with this program, we need to start focusing in different areas, not just in Canton, not in Upper Saddle Point, and in Federal Hill. We need more, we need areas where maybe we can't sell the property as high, but however you give the end buyer the same quality, or the same financial savings as this type of buyer over here. So I'm in support of it, but I'm also in support of this program reaching different areas, because I develop not just in one area, I develop in the whole Baltimore City as a whole. So what's good for the goose over here, it'd be good for the gander in other areas. So I'm a proponent of the program, however, it needs to reach different areas and not just over here.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And just to let you know that the Park Circle community of Park Heights is a CHAPS-designated area as well.
Thank you.
Tyrone Lindsey?
Good morning, Madam Chair, committee, and the council. I just want to echo a lot of this. My name is Tyrone Lindsey, and I'm a private investor, started a company, Indicay Properties, after my three kids. I'm a Maryland native, I attended the University of Maryland, Baltimore County, and I ran a youth and progress mentor program there. We worked with Baltimore City View. We got to go into the city and see the numerous blocks of light where these kids were playing, where these kids were learning, where these kids are growing up. And I knew I wanted to help in some way. So, guess what, 20 years later, and, you know, working, you know, with CHAP, I'm working in up in Marble Hill on Madison Avenue, 1506, 1508, 1510 Madison Avenue are my current properties. And, you know, we want to remove that light, we want to restore these properties to their, you know, original grandeur. These properties were, I'm in a distressed area, so I definitely echo the sentiments of the prior callers of the CHAP program being renewed, but also with that focus on being in these stressed areas. When I came to these areas, these houses were occupied by folks with, you know, opioid addictions. The roof in one of the properties, the first and second floor were found in the basement. These properties need additional work to get the properties back up to be respectable for the, you know, the future residents of Baltimore City. You know, it's not just restoring and rehabbing these properties, but they need additional work, so additional census would greatly be helpful, you know, for the transitioning, for these transitioning areas. But one of the great things is, is I knew when I came across some of these unexpected things, you know, vandalism, you know, the theft and destruction of property, I knew that, you know, I was working towards a CHAP credit as well, and that that CHAP credit helped to offset, you know, some of these issues. And so without that, without being able to lay those off, I wouldn't have been able to, you know, put in some of the higher-end finishes. I would not have been able to complete the properties the way the future residents of Baltimore deserve for them to be completed. I know, and also didn't want to be one of those, you know, remote landlords that didn't care about the properties, you know, slumlord for lack of a better term. I wanted a property that people could respect, people would want to take care of, wanting to, you know, moving to good tenants and good families, and so that it would benefit all of Baltimore. So ultimately, the CHAP credit, you know, not only gave an incentive to mitigate, you know, incentive to, you know, the future residents, and it offered them hope. And with that hope, as that tax credit can be passed to the future homeowners, they can reinvest into their home, they can have pride into their home, and with that tax savings, you know, over the years. I could develop a home that could be attractive. One of the previous folks that testified said that I couldn't have sold the property, you know, I would have lost, you know, money on the property. It wouldn't have gotten the incentive to continue to do future projects. So the CHAP credit is critical. It is absolutely critical so we can, you know, reinvest into these projects and neighborhoods. You know, we're creating jobs. You know, my close man came by and saw me the other day, DJ, coming on up Madison Avenue, and he was just so thankful that we were there and, and the things that we were doing with the neighborhoods and transitioning that street. You know, the investment program clearly pays for itself in so many ways, rather, you know, not just the dollar investment amount, but, you know, for the private community and with everything that's going on today, we need to invest in our communities, and this CHAP credit is critical of that.
Thank you. The next person, Rolando?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm not a developer, I'm an homeowner, and I bought an abandoned property that we have here in Reservoir Hill. One of the presenters, person that spoke before, was a person that was from CHAP, stated that you all come and observe, watch the building prior and before. I'm just finding out about that I could apply for this credit. I actually have restored the building, I not remodeled it, I basically restored the outside of the building. So I'm wondering how do I go about getting this tax credit when 90% of the property is already been done with high-quality material?
You'll have to talk to the people in CHAP, so you.
Who do you direct me to CHAP? Because trying to get you to CHAP has been very difficult.
Mr. Holcomb, do you want to give information so this person can contact your office?
Yes, this person, again, shoot me an email at eric.b-r-i-c.holcomb@baltimorecity.gov.
You want a little for us, Mr. Holcomb?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And there are no more hands raised, and if there's anyone else that is listening, you can still send an email for your testimony. And so at this point, there's no amendments. We, as I mentioned before, there's, where they're going to be working on a joint floor amendment that will be submitted to our committee on September 14th to present at the September 21st council meeting. Do I have someone from the committee that would like to make a motion on the bill?
Move, let's take a move.
Second, by Costello.
Thank you, gentlemen. So it's moved by Councilman Rysinger, and second by Councilman Costello. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello? Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Rysinger?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes? Thank you. This is a unanimous vote, and this will be moved to the next council meeting. Thank you so much, and thank all of the volunteers and attendees that gave testimony on this important tax credit bill. And give us like one minute, and we're going to be setting up for the second and final bill, 20-0593, the tax sale. So give us one minute. Thank you.